Please stand, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a few moments.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's just have a moment of silence for our fellow North Carolinians who are facing the tragic aftermath of the recent hurricane and for the victims of an airplane crash in our own community. Thank you and be seated. Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Candidate Forum for the Dare County Board of Commissioners, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Dare County. I am Ginger Webster, coordinator for this forum. I'd like to thank you all as well as the candidates for participating in the event this evening. I want to let you know that the Board of Commissioners has also made available the Fessenden Annex in Buxton for voters on Hatteras Island to listen to this forum and submit questions. A warm welcome to those who are watching from Buxton. We are videotaping the event this evening and it will be available on the League of Women Voters of Dare County website as well as on Current TV. The League of Women Voters is celebrating its 104th anniversary and we are proud to continue the tradition of bringing candidates and voters together in this way to empower voters. I will now introduce the moderator for this event, Tanta LaChard Hendricks.
Good evening. I am member and secretary of the League of Women Voters Dare County. I live in Grandy in Currituck County. The League is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization. It encourages informed and active participation in all levels of government. It works to increase understanding of major political policies and issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League remains a strict, nonpartisan policy. It neither endorses nor opposes any political party or candidate. The League participates in the positive campaign project and has requested that each candidate tonight take the Code of Campaign Ethics pledge. We prohibit campaigning or campaign literature in this forum room. Please turn off your cell phones and electronic devices, please. And we ask too that the audience be respectful of the candidates by refraining from clapping or cheering for individual candidates. Remember, time is very, very small for each candidate. And wait until the end of the forum to applaud all candidates. League members participating today are the greeters who will retrieve your question card. We have Chris Pruitt and Karen Laurie and Andrea Scholar. And in Buxton, we have Kristen Burnett, Gracie Fuller, and Audrey Kramer. And our question reviewers are Ginger Walters, Claudia Cosinet, Linda Berendelli, and Deb Bauer. Our timekeeper, perhaps the most important guy in the room, is Charlie Reese. Now, let me tell you about the candidates. There are five Dare County Board of Commissioners positions up for election on November the 5th, and we have eight candidates on the ballot. Present this evening are District One Carson Creef, unopposed; District Two Katie Morgan; District Two Robert Woodard Sr., incumbent; District Three Steve House, incumbent; District Three Dennis Sanger; District Four Aida Havel; District Four Mary Alon Balance; District One Mike Burris, unexpired and unopposed. The two unopposed candidates, Creef and Burris, will participate in the opening and closing statements but will not participate in the question and answer segment unless they raise their hand to speak on the issue or a question is specifically directed to them. The format for the forum. Each candidate has three minutes for an opening statement. The timekeeper will signal when the candidate has 30 seconds remaining and the timekeeper will stand if the candidate continues past the allotted time. Next, candidates will respond to questions from the audience. Questions were either submitted prior to the forum by voters or they may be submitted during the forum. They are signed with their town of residence or business location and name. Reviewers review the questions for clarity and to avoid duplication. We believe that this is a procedure that affords the greatest variety of subjects to be covered in this allotted time. The League advocates positive campaign practices and we reserve the right to omit any question that is viewed as personal attack. I will read the question as written and identify the submitter. Questions may be addressed to a specific candidate or all candidates. Questions related to a specific candidate may be answered by any candidate if so desired. Two minutes are allotted for responses. The timer will signal the candidate when 30 seconds remain and will stand if the candidate goes over the time allotted. Opportunities will not be extended to those who initially pass on a question. Finally, for the closing statement, each candidate has two minutes entitled to them. And before we started, the candidates drew numbers to establish the order for opening statements and we will reverse that order for closing statements. We will begin with the opening statement from the candidates. Based on those numbers drawn, we begin with Robert Woodard Sr. Candidate Woodard.
Well, thank you, and first and foremost, let me thank you for taking the moment, a moment of silence for our neighbors in western part of the state as well as our victims from the plane crash. Thank you so much. 104 years?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, 104 years old? None of y'all look over 35. I want to thank y'all for hosting this event this evening. And first and foremost, I want to thank my wife, Linda, who's here tonight. She is my inspiration. She is my motivation. She is my cheerleader for some 33 years. I love you, Linda, and thank you for your support. I'd like to personally thank each and every one of you here this evening that has shown up to get to know the candidates. I believe government works best when concerned citizens like yourself show up for events like this, this evening. I look forward to answering the League's questions and sharing with you the things that this board has accomplished under my leadership without raising your taxes. Please know, I'm happy to talk with each and every one of you after this meeting is over. If your question hasn't been answered, you can reach me. If that doesn't work for you, you can reach me on my cellphone number at 252-216-8240. Or you can email me at woodard@darenc.com. Even though Dare County still has issues that we continue to face, I am totally confident that if we continue to build good relationships with Raleigh and Washington DC and if we continue to work closely with our key partners like NC DOT, the National Park Service, and the Corps of Engineers, and then if we continue to follow the conservative financial policies that we have in place, I strongly believe that we can preserve the quality of life that we all enjoy here on the Outer Banks and we can make it the best place in the world to live, work, and raise our family. Thank you.
Dennis Sanger.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak directly to the Dare voters and many thanks to the League of Women Voters in organizing and facilitating this forum. My wife and I have lived in the Outer Banks since 2016. We love it here. We love the beaches, the shorelines, and we love our community. We are settled in here and we have no intentions of living anywhere else. And because of that, I decided to run for commissioner to improve our access to healthcare, care for our natural environment, and to make our government be more transparent and responsible in how our taxpayer dollars are spent. In this past year, we have seen several contentious issues that still have not been fully resolved to satisfaction of the communities. Housing continues to be an issue, as it is in almost every community nationally. There were multiple homes collapsing into the ocean just this past summer, and there are the environmental impacts of the formerly used defense site in Buxton. And we continue to see our population growing without an increase in the number of doctors and specialists to provide enough care for our residents here in Dare, forcing most of us to travel distances to see providers elsewhere or resorting to using urgent care. I have two grown sons who have lived and worked here and experienced many of the economic challenges all of you are facing to make a living and to raise a family. My expertise in healthcare quality and performance improvement will help me address these challenges and explore solutions that are effective. I have over 30 years of experience working in healthcare settings to analyze problems, identify solutions, and determine what works best. I have been a team leader for so many projects, supporting government agency operations, and I know how to work in a team. The Board of Commissions needs to adopt an approach of gathering balanced community and expert input to tackle these issues. I want to see the commissioners go into the community and getting that balanced perspective. We can't wait until approaching issues become a real problem. We need to be proactive and thoughtful in considering multiple approaches, including those that have worked in other communities. We can do better. We have to do better. We have to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, and I believe the time for change has come. As you listen tonight, ask yourself, how have any of these issues that we're discussing, how have they changed in recent years? We need to find solutions that work for the residents of Dare. Thank you.
I would remind candidates, please press the green button before you speak. After you're done, please press the red. Mike Burris.
Good evening. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here and everyone for attending tonight and taking time out of your schedule to come and show an interest in what your candidates have to say. If we don't do that, then government will certainly rule without our input, and we don't want that. So it's very important that folks show up and take an active interest. As she said, my name is Mike Burris. I'm born and raised in wine cheese, North Carolina, and I hope to remain there for the rest of my days. I've, I tell people all the time, I had the best upbringing and the best hometown. I absolutely have loved every bit of growing up here in Dare County. I want to take an active role in politics. I always say, if you, sometimes you have to be the change that you want to see. That's what interested me in running, was being the change that I wanted to see. And then another thing I always say is, if not now, when? Don't, don't delay. And that's something I like to think that I'll be able to help with the board in continuing on the fine work they've done, is taking a proactive approach to some of the issues that we've been facing for a long time now that we can hopefully get ironed out here in the near future. That being said, there's nowhere that doesn't have something pop up. Everywhere in government, state, federal, local levels, you're always going to have issues pop up. So we're just in the position that we have to do the best we can for everybody, not just our friends, not just our party. And that's what it means for me to be able to represent everyone here in Dare County, and I'm very excited at the opportunity that you all have provided for me. Thank you.
Steve House.
Like everyone else, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us formed today. It's just another chance for us to get our voices out and to thank all of y'all for attending and also the thousands of people that are probably watching this as the videos go on. I'm Steve House. I was, I've been in Dare County since 88. I did have to leave for a few years. My career took me out to California for a while and I saw how things were done back there, and I could not wait to get back to Dare County. Dare County is home. My, to me, my wife Cheryl, she is my biggest fan, my best cheerleader, and also my worst critic, and she keeps me grounded. And I can't, I can't thank her enough for that. And my three daughters are the same way, and my grandchildren now are getting old enough where they're getting to be the same way as well. So I truly value the family nature and being in Dare County, and Dare County is a family. We've been through thick and thin together. Whenever there's adversary in Dare County, we're the first ones to step up and help each other out. I cannot tell you how many phone calls, emails, and stuff that I have gotten in the past weeks of how much our community is helping in the western part of the state. It's just phenomenal, the outpouring of compassion, and that's why I like being a part of this family. And to support the family of trying to do the best job that I can as your county commissioner, I've truly enjoyed the last eight years of working on issues with the citizens' input on issues that we're dealing with and some of the things that we've been able to accomplish. One of the things I worked very closely with, very first ever of its kind, was a public-private partnership for a dredge that can now keep our waterways open so that the Army Corps that couldn't do it in the past to keep it open, now we've got it open. And the first time in 12 years, we've had a fully loaded trawler come into our waterways, which has not happened in 12 years. And in the past eight years, prior, eight years ago, even the small trucks couldn't come in. Now they're coming in. So I've done that. I've helped with that program, and it's tons of, tons of people involved with that. My experience as, I was 30, 32 years in emergency services. I was the youngest training officer in the state of North Carolina at age 18. Up until that time, and since then, the youngest training officer in North Carolina is 24 years old. Also with that, I have experience in local, federal, and state politics I have all my adult life, and I have brought that experience with me to this chair. And thank you so much, and I've enjoyed serving the citizens of Dare County and look forward to another four years. Thank you.
Aida Travel Havel.
Good evening and thank you to the League for hosting this forum. My name is Aida Havel, and I bring you greetings from Hatteras Island, where a formerly pristine beach is now closed due to the presence of petroleum contamination and exposed infrastructure, where houses are falling into the ocean at an accelerated rate, and where our beloved lighthouse is no longer has her stripes and is scaffolded from top to bottom. But we are a resilient people and our light will continue to shine. Over a year ago, I decided to run for commissioner because I wanted to make a difference and because I believed I had the skill set to make that difference. I grew up in Raleigh, attending the Wake County Public Schools, went to Davidson College and was in the fourth class of women to go all the way through, and then went to law school in Chapel Hill, and I was there when Michael Jordan was playing basketball. For 25, for 25 years, I was defined as a bulldog divorce attorney until I realized how detrimental that entire system was to my clients, to their children, and to me personally. I gave up litigation and found a better way called collaborative law, where attorneys work together to find points of agreement and then build on those. But all I knew how to do was to slice and dice people on cross-examination. So I went back to school and obtained a master's degree in conflict resolution from UNCG, and I learned how to listen to all voices, how to identify common ground, and how to build consensus. Until COVID hit, I traveled around the state of North Carolina, training other attorneys on how to be collaborative. I give you that background because I believe those life experiences have prepared me to be an excellent county commissioner. I know how to read contracts and statutes. I'm willing to ask questions and dig deep when I don't understand something, and I'm also willing to work with anybody, anywhere, who has a good idea to move Dare County forward. I look forward to building consensus with all of the commissioners and to make decisions with the best interests of all community members in mind. There are a lot of things that we could be doing better in Dare County. We need to provide more oversight on things like the $35 million for housing that we had to give back to the state and the Miss Katie dredge, which as of today has sat idle for two weeks. We need to advocate for more healthcare and for fairer fishing regulations for our commercial fishermen and for more reasonable insurance coverage. And we need to find a way to better meet the needs, housing and otherwise, of our year-round local population while still providing excellent service to our vacationing guests who provide us with a great quality of life. Thank you, and I look forward to an engaging discussion tonight.
Mary Alon Balance.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ellen. I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for doing this and also for the 411.org information that is available to people online to go in and read questions that we have answered. My husband is not able to be here tonight because he's a commercial fisherman, so he's working at a pizza shop to pay our bills. So I've been here for 27 years. I've been a mother and a wife of a commercial fisherman. I've seen what the commercial fishing and the regulations that are imposed upon us has done to our communities. I've worked with the Division of Marine Fisheries and the South Atlantic Marine Fisheries to help fight those regulations. It doesn't just affect our commercial fishermen. It affects our restaurants. It affects our tackle shops. It affects our ability to pay for housing. It affects so much. I have a son whom I'm very proud of. He is a part-time EMT for Dare County, and that too is another very important part of what happens here in Dare County and when we take care of our citizens and keep them safe. Raising him in Hatters Village, I would argue that Hatters Village is the best place to raise your kid in Dare County, and watching him have the ability to grow up here and surf and fish. He attained his commercial first fishing license at the age of 10. So it runs deep. And being a part of the school and watching him grow, I was president of the Cape Hatters Booster Club for nine years, helping our students and our community stay connected to what we do as a community. I've been on the Dare County Board of Education for eight years. I'm finishing my eighth year. Learning that part of what happens in Dare County has given me a deeper understanding of budgets, of how you work hard with others to get things done. There are a lot of challenges that face our communities with the beach erosion, the FUD site in Buxton, the list goes on. But I do believe that our current commissioners have done a very good job of keeping people informed and a part of. Could you do more? Of course, there's always more to do, and I want to be a part of that. I want to be a part of doing more in Raleigh, in Dare County, and in our communities as a whole. I have served, I was recognized actually by the commissioners during my efforts in Matthew to bring our communities together after a disaster, much that they're dealing with in western North Carolina. Have very dear friends there that are in complete turmoil. Understand that completely. So there's a lot we can do. I look forward to being a part of what we do to make Dare County a better place for our citizens, a better place to live, and I look forward to an opportunity to work for our community regardless of the outcome of the election. I am excited. So, oh, and one more thank you. Thank you, Buxton, for turning out.
Carson Creef.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. I thankfully don't have an opponent up here, but thanks for everybody who's supported me through this entire process. Obviously, this is my first time ever running for political office as well. I didn't just run for myself. See, through my work, through coaching the youth ministry over the years, I see in the children's eyes, in wine cheese, Collington, Kitty Hulk, the Kenny Keters, Hatterisers, I see a future without them in it on our island because the state is attacking our industry. I am a commercial fisherman. I hear everybody talk about how they're going to help fix it. I can assure you, I'm going to help fix it because my business relies on it. Our boat building industry helped build this island. Very rarely do we hear anything about them. We're not going to be able to build ourselves out of these housing market crisis we're in. You can't build your way out of it. We don't have enough land. But we can do everything in our power to make housing more affordable by deregulating, get spending less money on permits for the single-family home. If you own a lot, you should be able to build on your property without having to pay in excess on permits and fees, and we as a board can do better on making it more affordable to build a house. I believe in the opportunities here. I do think that we have excellent people in this county. We have excellent EMTs, excellent police force, and sheriff's department. I think that we have excellent teachers. I think we've got some of the best teachers in the world right here in Dare County, including the former teacher, Ms. Bassnight, who currently serves on our board. Thankful for all my teachers out there, too. Thankful for all my teachers out there, too. My family's been here since the 1600s. I didn't move here in 2016. I can proudly say that my heritage on this island, I've got to see from all the old-timers telling me about how things used to be around here. I believe that we can make those same opportunities available again for our children. Our children want to live here, too. We can do it. We can do it, people. We can figure out ways to cut spending and lower taxes. I'm a conservative. I want to lower taxes. That brings more house median income in for families that need it, now more than ever with the current inflation rates. Thank you again for all the support, and I can't wait to serve you for the next four years. Thank you.
Katie Morgan.
Thank you, everyone that came out, and thank you, League Women Voters, for putting this on. I'm a proud product of Dare County. Growing up in Kitty Hawk, I attended Kitty Hawk Elementary, First Flight Middle, and I graduated from Manio High School in 2001. After years away, my fiance and I decided to return to the Outer Banks to raise our children. We wanted them to experience the same magic of this community that shaped my own childhood. From a young age, I found a passion for aviation, earning my pilot's license at just 17 out of Manio Airport. Later, I shared that passion in teaching others to fly. I went on to study at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, where I not only expanded on my knowledge of aviation, but I also learned how to thrive in high-pressure environments. I developed skills in managing large workloads, staying calm in stressful situations, and proving myself in a male-dominated field. After my aviation career, I shifted my focus to healthcare, becoming a dental hygienist. I dedicated over a decade of my life serving underserved communities in nonprofit and urban dental offices. When we returned to Dare County, my fiance and I started a tree company, using his climbing expertise, becoming certified arborists. Together, we've put down deep roots here. But this isn't just home to us, it's where we do want to grow old. But I'm not just connected to Dare County through my work. I'm part of the fabric of the community. You'll see me at your grocery store. You'll see me at events. You'll see me at the sidelines cheering our children on. You'll see me hanging out with neighbors from Duck to East Lake to Hatteras. Like you, I've felt the strain of rising costs and the challenges that have threatened the quality of life here. I've watched lifelong friends be forced to leave because of housing, and we've had to tighten our belts, just like many of you. That's why I'm running for Dare County Commissioner. I believe we need fresh perspectives, leadership that's grounded in humility and accountability. Too often, we see leaders dodging tough truths, making empty promises, or worse, being dismissive and rude when faced with concerns. That's not leadership. True leadership means serving the people and not acting like a ruler above them. I'm running to be a voice of the everyday citizens of Dare County, people who, like me, want honest leadership that represents their needs. It's time for our community to have a commissioner who not only understands our challenges, but also fights relentlessly for real, tangible progress. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now we will have questions from the voting public and audience. These questions are for all. They're too related. How can the county commissioners ensure that the Miss Katie dredge remains operational and maintains safe waterways? Second question, no, okay, just the answer to that one. Thank you for that clarity. We'll begin with candidate Morgan.
Well, the permits have been suspended for the Miss Katie dredge for who knows how long now. Ninety-eight percent of the Miss Katie's loads of dredged material over a nine-month period were removed from outside of the channels. Data pulled from the sensors on the Miss Katie dredge, which the county always had available, showed that it had dredged as far as 445 feet outside of the 100-foot width channels. To put that in perspective, a football field, end zone to end zone, is 360 feet. Curiously, we pay this company by cubic yard for the material that is dredged. I strongly feel that our watermen are overregulated in our state, and I don't love rules and regulations. But I do know personally that I can't just drive 85 miles per hour down the bypass 98% of the time because I'm going to be getting in serious trouble. We desperately need a dredge to keep our waterways safe. We desperately wish that our county, I desperately wish that our county, had gone with an experienced dredging company, and I desperately hope it gets back out there working as soon as possible. Not only does this dredging company privately own our dredge, but in 10 years, they have zero obligations of staying in our waterways. The owners of the Miss Katie dredge secured a forgivable loan from the state with one main condition, that they had to dredge our channels at a lower rate than industry average for 10 years. And they have been doing that for $1 to $2 less per cubic yard dredge thus far. To make matters worse, two and a half of those 10 years, they've been held up with permit issues. The Miss Katie has not been actively dredging to ensure our safety since September 19th, which means it has been 15 days without crucial support for our watermen. This gap comes at a critical time during our hurricane season. Thank you.
I apologize I did not identify the submitter. The name is Ernest Grieve, and will now ask the same question to candidate House.
As chairman of the Oregon Inlet Task Force, and I work very closely with the Miss Katie Project. The Army Corps of Engineers suspended the permits that we had because there were some clarification issues that we needed to get worked out. Also, the fact of her dredging outside of the dredge boxes was a little bit cumbersome. Every quarterly meeting we had with the dredge and all the permits inquired, it showed us where the dredge box was. Army Corps Navigation said where the dredge box was. Sometimes that wasn't transferred to Army Corps Regulation, or the coordinates were slightly off. Also, the fact that when they do give you a dredge box, it's 100 feet wide. In the drawings, it shows it 100 feet wide on the bottom and sloped edges so the edges don't collapse in. A lot of times, they were doing those sloped edges, but the Army Corps Regulation saw it was outside the dredge box. So there's two very live situations where they were showing it outside of the dredge box, but yet they were in compliance. Also, the Army Corps of Engineers at one time put a dredge box over a shipwreck, which was a direct violation of the permit, and we worked very diligently to get that shipwreck out of contention because that shipwreck had been blown up and was no longer in there. Miss Katie's, we've been working very hard with the Army Corps, myself, and our county manager went down to Wilmington last week and spoke to the Army Corps. We're going to have those permits back starting next week, and Miss Katie will be rolling.
Same question, candidate Havel.
Obviously, this is an issue that is of great concern to me.
Excuse me. Press your green button, please. Thank you.
Obviously, this is an issue of great concern to me. I mentioned it in my opening statement. I think one of the problems with this issue that concerns me the greatest is that this was the third violation and that we knew nothing about it. There was a violation apparently in April of 2023. There was a violation in August of 2023. Those were not made public. We don't know where or why the county did not apparently address those violations at that time. But this current violation where they actually suspended the permit was the third time that the county was aware that the Miss Katie had been dredging outside the box. I am extremely concerned about the lack of oversight on this issue. And so to answer the question directly, how do we ensure that the dredge remains operational? If I'm a commissioner, I'm going to ask the tough questions. I'm going to say, are we operational? If I have to, I'll ask, you know, on a weekly or monthly basis, are we dredging within the box? How can we be sure? We need closer oversight. I don't know if that is the county manager or the Oregon Inlet Waterways Commission or who it is, but we, as county commissioners, the buck stops here. Ultimately, we are responsible for that, and it is, I think, pretty embarrassing that we have not been dredging for two, two and a half weeks. We do need to get it operational, and I think we need to have much better oversight, and we need to understand clearly why the deficits were not addressed in April and August of last year and why it came to this point this year.
Candidate Balance.
Thank you for the question. So when you're dealing with government agencies, they like to change the rules sometimes, and it depends on who's there sometimes. When you look at, as a commercial fisherman and dealing with these waters, it changes, you'll need to ask daily because the shifting sand changes daily. Depending on how that current's running, depending how any of that's going, can change daily. So even though they set these limits with computer systems that are on a boat that report back, and as, you know, if you've had to deal with the internet in the last couple of weeks, you'll know that that's not always an easy thing either, but they're relying on getting information from these boats when this sand is shifting constantly. So how do you, again, going back to that question, how do you guarantee that that's being done? You're right, oversight, but it's continuing to work with state and federal agencies to make sure that that equipment is working properly, to make sure that we're getting reports back on how that's working properly. But shifting sand is shifting sand, and anybody who's tried to get anything done on their property on Hatters Island or in federal waters and state waters, it's constantly changing. We get regulations from the state agencies, from NCDMF, proclamations that come out two, three weeks before you need to set your nets. So these are ongoing issues that we just, we do, we need to stay on top of it. We need to be asking questions, and we need to be making sure that we're communicating with the people that are operating that dredge on a daily basis, at least weekly. Thank you.
Candidate Woodard.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
Please turn on your green button. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. You know, it was mentioned that we should have used an experienced dredging company. God rest his soul, Jim Tobin, who was chair of the Oregon Inlet Task Force, along with my friend, Commissioner House. This is the first of its kind, folks, in the entire country of the United States of America, a public-private partnership for $15 million to get a dredge built to open our inlets. For 40-plus years, the inlet was only opened by the Army Corps of Engineers 33% of the time. We're open constantly now. It was also mentioned that it's a shame it's been shut down for two weeks. It's been in a shipyard for two weeks for maintenance. Dredges have to have maintenance done to them. Those arms that fall out, that dredge mechanically, take a huge beating on the vessel. So it's in the shipyard now, right now, for maintenance. The dredge company that was mentioned that we should have used another dredge company, we sent bids out, the Oregon Inlet Task Force did. We had multiple companies decline to even bid on it. The one company that's been stated that we should have used an experience, they wanted to moor the dredge in Virginia. At a six-mile-an-hour rate, trying to drive a dredge from Virginia all the way to Oregon Inlet to have the inlets open was way costly, additional monies, and didn't make sense. In addition, they would not make Oregon Inlet and Hatters Inlet a priority. The company that we used moors it out of wine cheese, and it's done its job, and the inlet's been open more times and percentages than the Army Corps had ever done in over 40 years.
Candidate Zenger.
Yeah, I do appreciate the complexity of this issue. I was so excited when Miss Katie was first christened and came out and started dredging. It was an exciting moment. I thought, oh, we're going to be able to dredge our waterways regularly and without interruption. But that hasn't always turned out to be the case due to all sorts of complexities. I understand that. But it does call on the question of what is the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners? Board of Commissioners needs to stay on top of this issue. Now, I understand that there's been a number of citations that the Army Corps of Engineers has issued on this, and there's been a lot of attention focused on it recently. That's excellent. But my concern is, where was the attention a couple of months ago when the first citations came out and when this first problem started surfacing? And this is where I think the Board of Commissioners needs to be more proactive, and I'm confident in the future that you will attend to this as the Board of Commissioners because this has become such an issue. But the fact is, it shouldn't have gotten to this point, and we need to resolve it as soon as possible. Thank you.
May I respond?
No, sorry. Our next question is from Laura Allendorf. This question is for all candidates. If elected, I'm sorry. I would prefer if you put your hand up at the beginning of the question so that we can rotate everybody in, including those unopposed. Candidate Creef, thank you for catching that.
I believe our current board did an excellent job on getting the dredge. We need the dredge. My friends, my family, we put our life on the line every day we go out of that inlet. We need safe conditions, and that means we need a dredge. If we don't lobby the state on behalf of our commercial fishermen for deregulation, we're not going to need a dredge. Thank you.
The next question is from Laura Allendorf for all candidates. If elected, what will you do to improve access to healthcare for the citizens of Dare County? Candidate House.
As you remember back when the Viton doctors in Roanoke Island pulled out, I had personal conversations and contacted Centerra Health in Norfolk because they also have a certificate of need for Dare County. And the certificate of need laws in North Carolina are very complicated. As a matter of fact, if you're a doctor and you want to come in, say you're a cardiologist, you've got to get the other cardiologists here in Dare County to sign off to say, yeah, you're good to come in. That's part of the North Carolina certificate of need laws, and they are in depth, and they have quite a few, the hospitals have quite a few lobbyists in Raleigh to protect that article, too. So I was in contact with Centerra to come in. They were ready and willing to start looking at the idea of coming back to Dare County, and then all of a sudden, Viton says, hey, we've got doctors that'll come into Manio. The town of Manio has a task force for the health field, and they've helped a great deal in Roanoke Island, and they're actually looking at a project now on Hatters Island. So they are doing the good things here in Dare County to bring more doctors that we can in here. It is a very cumbersome area to try to get more healthcare specialized fields because we don't have the year-round population to support them. But there are some areas that are looking to do that. Centerra is actually looking at bringing part-time specialists down here and also up there as well, and I'm still in contact with them. So healthcare in Dare County does need to be addressed. We're looking at it. We're also relying a lot on the Outer Banks Hospital Board to do what's right for the community as well. Thank you.
Candidate Balance.
Hatters has suffered a lot with healthcare. There's a piece of property in Hatters where Medical Center sits, and Port is there now. It was given to us by the Park Service, and as long as it was used for a medical facility, it could be used at no charge. And Viton Healthcare pulled out of there, and they moved to Avon. And Viton Healthcare pulled out of there and they moved to Avon and left a lot of Hatters Village residents high and dry. So that building's still there and the county has that. And these rural, these more rural health systems, like what Manio is working on, I think there is definitely some room there for growth and there's some room there for some collaborative discussions to be had with doctors. I think that also touches on housing to some degree as well. We have to have housing available for doctors that want to come in. But I think it would be incumbent upon the commissioners to sit down with the hospital and see if there's some way that we can come up with some options there. They are a large, you know, they are a secure health system. Their profits are, whereas such, they should, we could, should be able to sit down and have some conversations, some collaborative discussion on how we can expand on that and make sure that all of Dare County, or Dare County has accessible health care. But health care, you know, for us on Hatters Island is not just about health care. It's about access as far as a road, as far as bridges. So it's definitely something that we do as commissioners need to sit down and look at and see how we can work on that to make it better. But there's opportunity and there's options there. They just, we need to get the right people at the table. Thank you.
Candidate Morgan.
I would support and ask our Dare County Health Department what they need from the county to ensure that they're fully staffed and capable. I would encourage members of Dare County to see if they qualify for services for the Community Care Clinic of Dare. I'd publicize the fact that the Community Care Clinic, at the Community Care Clinic businesses actually, that don't traditionally offer health care, can go and apply to get health coverage for their employees. I'd make that more public. I'd make it very simple and easy for the public to find out all of our amazing resources that we already have here in Dare County. I'd make sure that in-home hospice was more fully supported again. And honestly, housing equals health care. Jobs equals health care. Education equals health care. Environment equals health. I mean, it's all connected and I feel like if I, if given a chance to be a commissioner, I would really hit this head on. And I would definitely be attending every one of the health task force meetings in Manio because they are doing great things. Thank you.
Candidate Zanger.
Thank you. This is a problem that I really want to tackle from day one if should I become a commissioner. I think we need to take the lessons learned and the experiences from the Manio Health Care Task Force and quickly expand it to the entire Dare County. We shouldn't be sitting on our hands and waiting for the problem to fix itself. And Manio Health Care Task Force has started implementing some very effective solutions to address some of the issues that they've had in recent years. I think we need to expand it to all of Dare. There's also some other things we can do to provide some incentives to bring health care providers to Dare. Who wouldn't want to live in Dare? But it's always things like, you know, the cost of housing and a variety of other things that prevent health care providers from relocating here. Well, we can do some things to help with that. There are some things like some incentives for providing forgivable loans for housing or providing larger incentives and reimbursements for salaries. There's a lot of different techniques that we can use to bring more health care providers here. And if we can come up with a $15 million forgivable loan for a dredge, I'm sure we can come up with some forgivable loans for some extra doctors and specialists here in Dare. Thank you.
Candidate Havel.
If or when I become a commissioner, I will improve access to health care by being more of an advocate of bringing more health care here. When Manio lost its doctors, I'm not sure how many years ago, two or three years ago, I remember the county commissioner saying, oh, my goodness, this is terrible. Let's see what we can do to bring more health care to Dare County. And then they didn't do anything. That is why the Manio Health Care Task Force was formed, because they felt they had to advocate for themselves. Nobody else was doing anything. I do agree that we can learn the lessons from that task force and we can bring what Manio is doing maybe to a county level, but we are going to have to be advocates and better advocates for more health care here on the county commission. One of my particular signature issues running as a candidate from Hatters Island is that I believe we need an urgent care on Hatters Island. Right now, if you get a fish hook caught in your eye or your forehead in Hatters Village, you have to drive two hours to get to an urgent care. That's just wrong. There used to be an urgent care on Hatters Island. We need one again. I do understand the complexities of that. You need at least a doctor, a nurse and a front office person. And I understand that there may be some requirements that you have to be open 50 hours a week. But we have a lot of retired health care professionals on Hatters Island that I think would be willing to come in and staff it. We need to talk to the hospitals. We need to get all the stakeholders in a room together and we need to talk about it and we need to push it. And that is what I would do if and when I am elected. Thank you.
Candidate Woodard.
Thank you for that question. Thank you for that question. And I echo my fellow Commissioner House's comments concerning health care with the certificate of need with Centerra. We've reached out to them. Our board has reached out to the Outer Banks Hospital Board. We've worked very, very closely with Ronnie Sloan, who's the administrator of that. We've approved Roanoke Island Housing that he has built to bring in staff to work at the hospital. So that is ongoing and we need to continue to do that. Housing is an issue. We know for a fact that multiple folks, doctors, nurses have been lobbied to come to Dare County. Once they come here and they find out what the cost of living is, they can't afford to live here. So housing is a huge issue and we'll continue to work on that. We have a housing task force that hopefully, I'm optimistic, that we'll be able to expand upon that. I could not agree more with some of the comments up here with respects to the town of Manio. They've done a fantastic job with their work that they've done. So we'll continue to work with the hospital. We'll continue to work with the citizens and we'll do whatever we can to support the efforts to increase better health care in Dare County.
Question three from Jamie Wagner from Southern Shores. Zoning and local authority HB 259, introduced in the fall of 2023, had affected local zoning authority for affordable housing projects in Dare County. How did you see the impact of this legislation on our community and how do you plan to address these effects while ensuring workforce housing needs are met? Begin with Commissioner, or Candidate Havel.
Well, I think like everybody else in all of Dare County, when that statute was passed, I was horrified. It was overreached by the state, reaching down and trying to handle things on a local level. And you saw all of the incorporated communities line up very quickly to file a lawsuit. And I think that was entirely appropriate, even though I don't like lawsuits. I thought it was very appropriate, given what was happening. The good news is that's now been repealed. So that is no longer an issue. Obviously municipalities that are incorporated must have their own zoning that works for them, that fits with their history and their culture. And what works in Duck may not work in Nags Head. So I think people who are concerned about this issue need to work with their planning board and with their town council to figure out what works. I recently attended a Nags Head Town Council meeting and they thought they had a multi-use unit statute ready to be approved. They actually had two and they were going to vote on them. And it was so contentious that they actually put it off and did not vote that day. So it's a very, very complicated issue. And then when you look at the unincorporated areas of Dare County, such as the mainland or Collington or Hatters Island, where we don't have so many zoning regulations, there may be more creative things that you can do. I would like to, I'm looking forward to seeing the results of the housing task force. I understand that they'll be putting out a report at the end of the year. And I look forward to seeing what their recommendations are and working with those recommendations. It's a complicated issue. If it were easy, it would have been solved by now, but I'm ready to tackle it.
Candidate Zanger.
I was glad to see the municipalities pushing back on the state and pushing back on that legislation. And it did have an effect. This is what happens when you reach back out to Raleigh and are able to contend, be able to fight back on some of these issues. Unreasonable regulations, unreasonable legislation that's being pushed down. So that was very effective. I think that we definitely can learn from that and apply that to the non-municipality areas as well. So I am looking forward to the work of the housing task force, to see the ideas that are coming from them and the direction that they're taking. And I think we'll have some future direction from them in the short term.
Candidate House.
First off, my personal reflection, when I first found out that it went through, I was appalled. I would say, how could the state overrule what a municipality wants to do as far as their zoning and stuff? As a board, we did make it very clear that we were not going to abide by that, that we would listen to the towns and make sure anything that we did would be in with the town's parameters. However, that law has been repealed. It is no longer on the books. It's no longer out there. And so I don't see how any further answer we can do. That law is no longer on the books. And this board that I sit on has already said, we would not abide by that. We would work with the towns to put anything that would have been in the housing project in their hands. So thank you.
Candidate Balance.
As Commissioner House said, it was repealed. But the commissioners responded absolutely 100% on board. They instantly stood with their towns and the county and said, we're not going to do this. But I've, you know, in going to some, I've also been to some of the town meetings and seeing the way Kitty Hawk and Nags Head, they're working together to come up with solutions for their areas and they're passing ordinances that make sense for them and that's encouraging to see. I would like to, you know, with Ms. Creef and Malcolm Fearing heading up that task force and working with stakeholders within the county to come up with solutions, this is not going to be an easy issue and it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all issue. It's going to take a lot of collaboration and a lot of different ideas coming to the table to squash, to, you know, figure this out and get us where we need to be. I don't, you know, with the cost of housing and the cost of property, it's not going away. I think it's only going to get worse. But I think we are on the right track. I think the commissioners responded absolutely appropriately. They are obviously in full support of this county and the incorporated towns as well as the unincorporated. So I look forward to what comes out of this housing task force. In addition, you know, one of the discussions with the task force is the teacher housing. In 2004, Beverly Purdue passed a bill that allows us to do some housing on Roanoke Island. We've already done it on Hatters Island. We've done it in Kitty Hawk and we have a path to that. So I think we need to continue towards those solutions and making progress in creating affordable housing for people moving forward. Thank you.
Candidate Woodard.
Yes, ma'am. Let's get to the facts on this issue. The, there were a number of projects throughout multiple towns that housing projects were presented in either li-tac, 4%, 9% credits to a developer or just market rate. And we were shot down in a number of municipalities. And I don't argue the fact that those commissioners in those towns did the right thing. They listened to their constituents and I understand that. I never criticized them. Our board never criticized them and I commend them for listening to their constituents. So as a result of that, legislature and our board had nothing to do with the language of this bill to override the solvency of our municipalities. Once we found out about it, we immediately, I meet with the mayors once a month. The county manager meets with the planning directors once a month. We immediately had those luncheons with those and said, our board, under no circumstances, will violate the solvency of our municipalities. And we shot it down and we said, we want no parts of this. As a result of that, after four years of working extremely hard, trying to spend 30-some million dollars that the board, that the legislature sent us, we weren't successful. Must admit, weren't successful. And so as a result of that, I formed the housing task force and I asked stakeholders throughout the county to participate. I asked every single town mayor to participate. I asked every single planning director. There's some 28 folks on that committee. Correct me if I'm right or wrong, Donna, but I think it's 28. And then they put Donna Creef in charge and Malcolm Fearing as chair. So I'm optimistic that we're going to make some headway with housing.
Candidate Morgan.
All right. Well, the House Bill 259, I did, I did help bring that to light to the public. I really did. If people don't know, I worked very, very hard to make sure that everybody understood how devastating that would have been for the towns. I'm super proud that the towns all filed lawsuits against the state for this bill. I was very disappointed that the county didn't file a lawsuit as well. All they did was put out, I can't even think of the name of it, a letter saying that they wouldn't violate the town zoning. But the thing is, it wasn't a county issue at that point. The state could have done it if they wanted to. So it was a terrible, terrible thing. And to say that they did not know about it ever is really hard for me to digest. It did get repealed. You're welcome. I really, really worked hard to educate. And I am also disappointed that the money got sent back without them advocating more to change the legislation, whatever. Like how can you just quit on Dare County and give back $35 million in state money without trying to go in there and lobby and change everybody's minds? So that one's near and dear to me. I am very proud of myself for that and I was very disappointed in the leadership on that one. So thank you.
The next question from Kenny Bright in Avon. This is for all candidates. Commercial fishing is a very important aspect of Dare County's economy. The powers in Raleigh seem to be trying to regulate our fishermen out of business. How do you plan to help save this important aspect of our economy? I will mark you in. Candidate Zanger.
Good question. I'm a recreational fisherman and I have to say that I've looked at the regulations and the rules for fishing and it makes my head swim. It's just so complicated. And for commercial fishermen, even more complicated. And for commercial fishermen, even more complicated. I think the current Board of Commissioners does a good job of working with the various agencies and the various oversight groups at the state level. And we have to continue with that collaborative work, that collaborative discussion. I would continue to do so, should I become a commissioner, and advocate for the fishermen and work with those groups very closely. I think that the rules and regulations that are out there need a lot of attention. There needs to be a lot of negotiation. And there needs to be a lot of consensus building with our agencies as well as with the fishermen and fishermen providing the feedback to these agencies. And I intend to do that and carry that forward. Thank you.
Candidate House.
As you all know, as the sitting commissioner, I have worked very diligently and very hard with our working watermen. I'm also chairman of Dare County Working Watermen's Commission, very heavily involved with the regulations that are affecting our commercial fishermen. Some of the things that I've helped to do, along with many other people, no one person can do any whole lot with our fishing industry. It takes a bunch of people to get together to do something. One of the things I did was tackle Raleigh. All the fishing bills that were coming through the House of Representatives or the Senate, I put a bug in the speaker's ear a couple of years ago. And Representative Hanig, once he was first appointed to the House or elected to the House, he drove it home. So now there is a subcommittee in the North Carolina House of Representatives that all fishing measures go through them, that go through the House of Representatives. And that committee has killed just about every bill that has hit Raleigh that has hurt our commercial fishermen from our duly-elected representatives in Raleigh. The big problem we have is the Marine Fisheries Commission. They are all appointed by the governor of North Carolina. And on that committee, a lot of the ones that are on there are very conservative-type recreational fishermen. And there are commercial fishermen on there as well. But to change any regulation that is deemed necessary that the Division of Marine Fisheries puts out, here's a fishing plan, a management plan for this species. And they have recommendations in there. To change any of those recommendations made by the Division of Marine Fisheries, the Division of Marine Fisheries Commission has to have a two-thirds vote. That is very hard to do in that commission the way it's set up. So I've worked very hard for our commercial fishermen. Last two years ago, I got rock fishing opened up for two weeks, which was shut down. Thank you.
Candidate Woodard.
Yes, ma'am. Once again, Commissioner House has worked tirelessly on behalf of our board. He keeps us updated regularly at every single meeting concerning the marine fisheries industry. He sends us emails constantly about what is going on. We lobby constantly on behalf of our fishermen to stop all the tough regulations that our fishermen have to go through. We, he attends those meetings. He takes our board's recommendations to those meetings. He makes public comment at those meetings. They send out information where they need input from different industries. And so we're constantly fighting on behalf of our marine industries. And quite honestly, folks, we need a change in that board. We need a board that is more committed to protecting the marine industries and our fishermen as opposed to those that are on it, that are constantly putting roadblocks up and putting more and more regulations on our commercial fishermen. And we need a change on that board. And we'll continue to fight. And we'll continue to lobby. And we'll continue to speak out on behalf of our fishermen to try to protect them because the industry, they're trying to shut the industry down.
Candidate Kreef.
When I am your servant commissioner, that Marine Fisheries Board, all my friends, family, and all the boys I fish with growing up, they're not going to like me very much. I'm going to fight them every inch, every step because they are trying to regulate us out of house and home. They're trying to price us out of our land and force us away from our island home where I personally am an 11th-generation commercial fisherman. Most people have a misconception that it's commercial versus recreational fishermen. Personally, I have no problems with recreational fishing whatsoever. I believe they're overregulated as well. Only allowed to catch one fish at certain times of year, no flounder this year. And then they say the commercial guys are catching all the flounder. I'll have you know that they just opened up our flounder season on Tuesday of this week. We get a potential of maybe six days max to flounder fish, six days to flounder fish on a species that is here year-round. What that does is that floods the market with everybody's fish all at the same time and in turn lowers our prices. Where we used to get $4 and $5 a pound for flounder years ago, back when inflation in the price of housing in here was a whole lot cheaper. Now, last year, we got $1.60 a pound. We don't know what we're going to get this week. We'll find out on Friday. It's not good. Marine Fisheries Board in this state is constantly attacking our industry. And I don't see the reason why because there isn't but about 2,000 of us left in the entire state. It seems like a whole lot of money and a whole lot of effort to shut down an industry that hardly few people are in. It seems very ridiculous to me. And I'm going to do everything and be on the forefront of that issue for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Candidate Morgan.
Okay. I'm not going to sit up here and pretend that I'm a commercial fisherman because I am obviously not. But I do have a lot of friends that are. And I do understand everything that Carson and everybody is saying about the overregulation of fish. It is insane. It makes it feel as if they're trying to make North Carolina a nursery for South Carolina and Virginia to come fish, just to fish from. And it's not right. And honestly, I wouldn't depend on one commissioner for all my information on this issue. I would actively learn everything that I can and figure out everything that I could do to help. And I would develop relationships with these Marine Fisheries Committee members. And I may be able to develop a different kind of relationship. I'm good at making professional relationships and helping build bridges. And maybe coming at them aggressively might not be the right way. And I feel like I could add a different perspective and a different attitude maybe when trying to help sway these people against some of these regulations. So I will learn everything that I possibly can about this topic. And for what I don't know, I will lean on my friends. I have been going to tackle shops. I've been trying to learn as much as possible. So I will do everything in my power to help the industry. Thank you.
Candidate Havel.
I'm so happy to hear that everybody up here is basically speaking with one voice on this issue. These regulations are really out of bounds. And I'll be honest, this issue was not even on my radar when I started running. But I quickly became aware of it. And I want to give a shout out to Stephanie and Randy Bain of Frank &amp; France Tackle Shop in Avon because they gave me an amazing education just in a very short period of time when there were some mullet fishing regulations that were coming up for consideration. And I really dove in. And if you all, if any of you have never looked at the fishing regulations in North Carolina, I really encourage you to just go and Google it and just see how incredibly burdensome and onerous there are. And, you know, Mr. Kreef is absolutely right. There's like this narrow window for certain species. And the first thing I thought when I saw it was, well, what if, you know, the weather is bad for those six days and the fishermen can't go out? What happens? It doesn't make any sense. And there are no regulations like that for South Carolina or Virginia. And as Commissioner Wally Overman said at the last meeting, it's like we are a nursery for those two states. And the other thing that I found really interesting was the requirements of the statute. I did go and look at the North Carolina statute on mullet. It said that they were supposed to do regular measurement of the fisheries. And they had not measured the mullet fisheries since 2019. And they are also supposed to study the economic impact of the regulations that they're proposing. And I couldn't find anywhere that they had studied the economic impact. So if I am a county commissioner, I will go to those meetings where there is an opportunity to give public comment. And I will ask the questions and why they are not considering these things. Thank you.
Candidate Balance.
There's not going to be enough time for me to answer this one. But I served on, I've served for United, North Carolina Watermen United. I served on the flounder advisory panel. My husband's been a commercial flounder fisherman for a lot of years. The Division of Marine Fisheries overreach is so far beyond egregious, it's not even funny. There's a statute on the books right now that any fish that's regulated, General Assembly statute says it has to have a 3, 50% chance of being successful in three to five years. The current ruling by the North Carolina Division of Marine Fisheries that they passed for flounder amendment three, it states in that amendment that in order for this to be 50% attainable in three to five years, we have to have participation of the southern states. Yet we have no, nothing from the southern states saying that they are going to do any kind of remediation at all. So we're, you're absolutely right. We are a nursery for the southern states. But more importantly, what we should, as Dare County citizens, be concerned with, the North, the Division of Marine Fisheries regulates us. We haven't had a representative on the Division of Marine Fisheries from Dare County in over 15 or 20 years because it's governor-appointed and he appoints whoever he wants. The current commissioner of the Division of Marine Fisheries refuses to come to Dare County. Yet Dare County, I'm sorry, I'm getting upset. Dare County is one of the largest tax dollars to the state on fishing. And we have no representation. If I'm commissioner, I'm going to Raleigh. And I'm going like now. It's too much. And it's not, it's completely out of control. We need to get with Bobby Hannig, Ed Goodwin, Norm Sanderson. These guys are all, they all want to help us get to where we need to be. And that's where we need to go immediately. Like, on top of your regulations with the fishing, then the SAMFC will come in and they'll allow trawlers to come out. And our price drops even more because now the trawlers are in federal waters running down our price. So I could go on. Please see me after the meeting.
This will be our last question. We need to leave time for you all to have your closing statement. So we're going to limit the response to this question to one minute. It is submitted by Jan Milke. And the note here says, this question was greatly condensed. What will you do in your position as a commissioner to ensure that contracts such as affordable housing or dredging are awarded to qualified companies with a history of successful projects? Candidate Balance.
That's, you have to set out RFPs for that. So you have to set out, and you're really dependent on who applies for that. If somebody doesn't apply, then that just stays open. So when you issue, or you put out a RFP for a federal or a state or county or whatever contract, you don't always get a plethora of people that are going to apply to do that job. Then you have to look at, are they, can they do commercial work? Or can they do certain things? This is, it's a very complex issue. You're going to, you're going to take the applications that you've received and you're going to do the best you can with what you've got. But there's also a little code and a little, when they put out a RFP, you say wording that gives you an "out" because you don't know who's going to apply for that. It's not an easy issue. Government contracts are very difficult. Doing things that we've done with school board, it's, you can have contract, RFPs out for months and not get anything. So that's a tough one.
Candidate Havel.
There are two parts to this. When we issue a contract, we have to make sure that it is awarded to a qualified entity. I don't believe that happened in the affordable housing situation. There was another more qualified candidate. But it went to a local candidate with connections. So I think we really have to ask questions. That's the first part, to award it to someone who's qualified. And the second part is to provide oversight. From the very beginning of the contract, to provide oversight, look at it on maybe a 30-day basis or a 60-day basis and stay on top of it. That was also not done in the $35 million contract. So if I am elected, I will really dig deep into the proposals. I will ask questions. And then I will provide oversight.
Candidate Zanger.
Well, I've been on the receiving end of this. If you don't have enough qualified bids, enough qualified vendors who want to, who want to go after an RFP, then you need to extend the time to look for other candidates. There's no lock-in that you have to provide that money to a standard, a substandard contractor. So I think you have to build into the contracting mechanism, the RFPs and all the other contracts that are involved. You need to put in the conditions that the county can walk away from an RFP if you don't have the sufficient quality contractors.
Candidate Woodard.
Thank you. Yes, RFPs, we certainly put those out on multiple things that we need throughout the county. When we receive those, staff, we have professional staff that reviews these. And they do their due diligence. And they make their recommendations. It also comes before the CIP Committee, the Capital Improvement Project Committee, where they do their reviews and they do their due diligence. They also make a recommendation to the board. When this is sent out, the board sees these, they review it, it's made a recommendation. And we have, in the past, extended the term because we didn't feel like that we had enough input. But that's how it's done. And that's how the contracts are issued. Everybody does their due diligence before a decision's made.
Candidate Morgan.
I would definitely ask the hard questions. My due diligence would be very in-depth. When we set out the RFPs, I would make sure that we advertise them maybe a little more easily findable, to say it in a bad way. But I would make it easier for people to find these RFPs. And I would also make sure that our local guys know about them. I mean, I feel like we need to look local first. I understand letting everybody know about them. But we have some of the best developers and best builders in the United States right here in Dare County. So I feel like we should always make sure that everyone here knows. And I will ask the hard questions. And I will make sure that these people are qualified. Thank you.
Candidate House.
Thank you. In county government, the RFPs go out for proposals, and proposals come in. And there are times when we can extend it. But there are also times that we know we're not going to get any more bids on it. Now, one of the things is about the housing project, the senior project person on that, on the coastal affordable housing is one of the biggest developers in North Carolina, not some local guy. And he has his staff in there with him as well. With the, with the Miss Katie, we had two bids come back, two proposals come back. And one just didn't, was not going to work for us at all. It would actually make things even more cumbersome than ordering an inlet. So we chose the company that had all the right credentials and awarded them the positions. And yes, we have gone out of our way to research, to advertise people in the professional areas to get these things back.
Thank you, candidates. Now, your closing remarks in the reverse order from the opening statements. Candidate Morgan.
I refuse to be defined by labels. While I'm running as a Democrat, my true commitment lies in finding common sense solutions that benefit our community, solutions that transcend party lines. I believe that this board... I believe that this board should prioritize the people it serves, not political affiliations. Having closely observed my opponent's recent decisions regarding our tax dollars, such as his choice for the Affordable Housing Group and the missteps surrounding the Miss Katie dredge, it's evident that my values may align more closely with fiscal conservatism than his. After more than a decade of the same individual making decisions while continuously acknowledging ongoing issues, we must ask ourselves, is he truly part of the solution, or has he become part of the problem? I am dedicated to a leadership style that prioritizes the needs of the people, demands accountability and stewardship of our funds. I won't simply go along to get along. I will challenge mismanagement and advocate for responsible spending. I am deeply committed to the, bleh, I am deeply committed to the future of our community. I vow to actively pursue long-term solutions that foster growth and prosperity rather than simply responding to the loudest voices. Together, we can build a Dare County that embodies our shared visions and dreams. And I really do thank you all for coming out and hanging out with us for an hour and a half of your time. And thank you, League of Women Voters, so much.
Candidate Creef.
I would like to start out by thanking my previous opponent, Wally Overman, for his years of service on our commission. He's an excellent human being, and I was glad to see him today in good health. We've been praying for him, and I just want to let him know that I think very highly of him. I'm quite the talk of all the civics classes around the Manio schools. All the kids like to talk about me. And, you know, to think that I inspire hope in them for a future generation of locals that can live here and operate business here, they give me more hope than I give them. I can assure you of that. I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to have been born and raised here. I know so many people in this county. I've had wonderful relationships here my entire life. And I know one thing. I don't know if I'm going to be commissioner for four years or longer, but I can assure you that every day that I'm in there, I'm going to give you everything I've got, everything that I can possibly do to make this county a better place, a safer place, and a more affordable place to live. I can't thank you enough for coming here tonight. I know it's a long drug-out process, sitting here listening to people talk all night, and you just sitting there. But thank you for coming. I appreciate each and every person in this room. God bless Dare County, and thank you very much.
Candidate Balance.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you again to the people in Buxton that I hope you're still there hanging out. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. My mother raised me to be a voice for those that didn't have one. And it's something that I've grown into and taken very seriously, and my record speaks for itself. I've done it from the time I entered Dare County, as from Sunday school to finishing eight years on the Dare County Board of Education. I've pushed the envelope on the Board of Ed. I fought hard for things for our kids, and I'll continue to fight hard for things for our kids, for the safety and security of our neighborhoods and our towns, for schools and education, for our beaches and our waterways, and for our young and our elderly. We need to work hard to look after each other, from fishing to construction to everywhere in between. And I'm ready to do the work, to be there and do what needs to be done for Dare County, to give a voice that feel like they can't use their own. My record speaks on that, and I'll stand on it all day long. So thank you again. Thank you, guys, for coming out, and I look forward to an opportunity to serve you.
Candidate Havel.
Thank you again to the League for hosting this forum. It's been a great exchange of ideas, and I truly appreciate the questions that you all have asked. Dare County is a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and retire, but it also faces challenges, many of which you've identified tonight through your questions. But have you noticed most of the issues that face us are not really red or blue or left or right? There's really much more that unites us than divides us, and I hope our answers have made that clear tonight. As I said at the beginning, I believe I have the skill set to read thoughtfully, dig deeply, and ask probing questions. I also have the ability to recognize points of agreement and to build on them to reach a creative and perhaps previously unrecognized solution. If you were not inclined to vote for me, I hope you will now consider it. And if you were inclined to vote for me, I hope you still are. My website is havelfordare.com. Thank you for your time.
Candidate House.
Thanks again for everybody to come out here, and thanks again, League of Women Voters, for having this forum for us. I've built those relationships that everybody's been talking about building. I have those relationships in Raleigh. I have those relationships with the Marine Fisheries Commission. Have those relationships in Washington. I've already built them, and I'm working on them, every single day on every issue that comes up. If it's our Buxton issue, if it's a dredging issue, a fishing issue, a housing issue, I've tackled those and made those relationships beneficial for us in Dare County. And there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes. Not everything can be out and open in front. That's not how it all works. Now, I'm not saying I'm going to be hiding everything. No, we're going to be as transparent as we possibly can. But it's just like if we want to buy a piece of property for a housing complex, that has to be kept in confidence with the home builder or with the property owner so we can negotiate a price and not make public. Those are the issues that are not transparent. Everything else we have done, all you've got to do is watch our videos, talk to any one of us. You can email us, call us, whatever. We'll tell you everything that we can possibly tell you. We've always been that way. And every article that we've put out through the county shows that. And I'm here, I've already built those relationships. I'm making things happen in Dare County. I have been truly honored to serve the citizens of Dare County for the last eight years. Again, I'm part of the community. I have been for, since 1988, retired from emergency services, helping to improve our EMS system by getting them to new stations. They deserve a $42 million project. Thank you for your time, and thank you for supporting me.
Candidate Burris.
I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight one more time. It really means a lot that you guys come out, and some of you here, and support, some of you getting to know your candidates. I love my hometown. This is where I'm going to be the rest of my life. I'm not leaving. I'm going to stay here. I'm going to fight, and I'm going to work hard for everything and everyone I can in this community. It means a lot to me. It's something I've always been set on doing. It's something I look forward to doing, to the point that even though I'm not officially elected yet until November 5th or early hours of November 6th, I've already started communicating and working with people, stopping and talking and seeing what issues people want us to address moving forward. I've talked with people who are in place on certain boards, Board of Education, some of the planning board members, different, we have some great folks serving on a lot of our local boards, town members, town board members that have reached out, and I've spoken to them on a lot of issues already. So we've already, I've been working with the commissioners already on trying to hit the ground running once I'm there. And they've been very great and gracious with their time and letting me know what to expect and things that will be necessary for me to hit the ground running. So I do appreciate that, gentlemen. Thank you very much. We have a wonderful community, but it is a very distinct community. It's very different from a lot of places. I would say we're very, very unique. And sometimes we're going to have unique problems, and they're going to take unique solutions. And it's going to take all of us working together to achieve that. So I hope, win or lose, for your candidate, you'll still support the person that does win because they're going to have Dare County's best interest in their mind. Thank you.
Candidate Zanger.
Thanks for this opportunity to answer your questions and to explain how I will approach the responsibilities of being a commissioner. And many thanks to the League of Women Voters for organizing and facilitating a really balanced discussion on these issues. We certainly appreciate it. I'm a strong believer in using data to show improvements in all problems and issues, and that can be a challenging task. But if we spend tax dollars to fix problems and resolve issues, we should be able to show measurable improvements to justify the use of those tax dollars. We will undoubtedly have major challenges in the next four years. Extreme weather clearly is now a new normal, and we have to be prepared. Housing will continue to be a challenge. The cost for insurance, as well as the cost of living, will continue to be challenges as well. When you're voting, please consider what you now know about each of the candidates on this forum, and select the one you think will best serve the needs of Dare residents. It's so important for us to choose those who will be most proactive and inclusive to solve our local issues. That goes across partisan lines, both at the local, state, and national levels. Select a person you really think can make a difference. Lastly, I want to thank the hard workers of the Board of Elections and the many election volunteers who will make our Dare elections work seamlessly. They ensure our elections are fair and honest, and I applaud their efforts. I ask each candidate on this stage tonight to accept the outcome of this election. There will be a winner, and there will be a loser. If I am the loser, I will be the first to call Stephen House and congratulate him and offer any assistance I can provide in the future. Thank you, and please come out and vote.
Candidate Woodard.
Once again, thank you, League of Women Voters, and thank you, folks, for being here this evening. I want to close by renewing my pledge to continue doing the things that have been proven to work for the people of Dare County. I'm proud of the accomplishments that we have made without raising your taxes. We must stay vigilant on every front to preserve our way of life, and we must continue safeguarding every taxpayer's dollar. I'm going to stop right here and not finish the rest of my comments that I had. What I want to say to you this evening, for those that will be watching this after this is over, and for every one of you out there this evening, when you return home this evening and you sit back in your chair and you get ready to go to bid, stop and think. Don't believe everything you read on Facebook that is a fact. Please, do your research. Go home and do your research. Reach out to people that know the people that serve on this board. I am so proud of our commissioners in the last 10 years, and as my chairmanship the last 10 years, the accomplishments that we have made are second to none, folks. They are second to none. So please, I implore you to do your homework and quit reading all the garbage that's on Facebook. Finally, I'll continue working wholeheartedly for the people of Dare County as your commissioner. It's my duty and my honor to work for you. This is a solemn responsibility that I take extremely seriously. That is why I respectfully ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
We wish to thank each candidate for your participation, and for you who are in attendance for your questions. Thank you so much, and let's show our appreciation. We thank the Dare County Board of Commissioners for the use of this meeting room in the Fessiden Annex and for videotaping this forum. This video will be posted on our website, which is L W V Dare N C dot org, and our YouTube page. The Dare County Current TV Channel will also broadcast this forum. Check their website for dates and times. I now return this forum back to our coordinator, Ginger Webster.
And thank you, Tanta, for moderating this evening. I also want to thank all of our candidates for participating in Vote411.org. This is a one-stop-shop website that voters can access on their phone or computer. Just key in your address, and you can view your ballot, candidate information, and responses to questions we posed. If you haven't, check it out. For those of you in the audience, please pick up this rack card for important voter rolls and key dates. In summary, this year you will be required to present an acceptable photo ID in order to vote. If you do not have one, you can obtain one from your county Board of Elections. The last day to register is October 11th. Early voting begins October 17th and runs until November 2nd in three locations, here in Manio at the Administrative Building, in the KDH Town Hall, and the Fessiden Center in Buxton. Absentee voting ballots may be requested until October 29th, online from the Board of Elections. And of course, Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. We encourage you to join the League of Women Voters as we strive to defend democracy. Thank you so very much for coming.